In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act of the state of New Jersey, adequate notice of this work session regular meeting of the Franklin Township Council was made by the posting on the bulletin board in the municipal building, the township website, and electronically transmitted to the official designated newspaper indicating that this work session regular meeting will take place in the municipal building, council chambers at 7:00 p.m. on Wednesday, September 27, 2023.
Thank you. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation of Councilwoman Udine.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Let us take the next few moments of silence to each seek in our own way whatever sources of inspiration will grant us the strength and power in our thoughts and decisions to be for the benefit of all people at all times. Amen.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Embarrasson.
Here.
Councilwoman Francois.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Present.
Councilwoman Purit.
Here.
Councilwoman Udine.
Here.
Councilman Vasanella.
Here.
Councilman Wright.
Councilwoman Francois is stuck in traffic. The commendations and proclamations, item number five on the agenda, agendas are there next to the clerk. We have one commendation which was going to be given by Councilwoman Francois. I've asked Councilwoman Udine to do it. Breast cancer awareness month proclamation, is there anyone here to accept? You could go to the podium.
Hello. Okay. Whereas October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which is annual campaign to increase awareness of this disease, and whereas the National Breast Cancer Awareness Month remains dedicated to increasing public knowledge about the importance of early detection of breast cancer, diagnosis, and treatment, and whereas the Franklin Township Council supports breast cancer research and wishes to educate the people of Franklin Township about detection risk factors and treatment, and whereas the American Cancer Society continues to advise women to get an annual mammogram screening once they reach the age of 40, and whereas this October, the Franklin Township Council recognizes breast cancer survivors, those battling the disease, the families who are a source of love, encouragement, and applaud the efforts of our medical professionals and researchers working hard to find a cure. Now therefore be acclaimed by the mayor and council of the township of Franklin, Somerset County, New Jersey, that the month of October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Yep.
Okay. Yes, and I'm happy to follow them. Thank you, Mayor Kramer. Thank you, Mayor Kramer, and the other officials of this esteemed establishment. I'm here to represent Sister to Sister. I am an 18-year survivor myself. However, I'm here to thank you for acknowledging us. We've been in the business of helping those women who need help experiencing going through breast cancer for the last 23 years. And as this young lady just pointed out, October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And how we're kicking that off is on Sunday, October 1st, Mayor Kramer and other officials will be attending our Sister to Sister house where we're doing light pink house because pink does represent cancer survivors. The other functions that we have coming up on October 7th, we'll be doing, just bear with me, I'm not a techie person. October 7th, we'll be doing our Breast Cancer Walk for Life at the Colonial Park. It starts at 7:30 a.m. Everyone is welcome to join us. It's still time to register to do so. And the last item which I have on my notes is for October 21st, we're going to a free conference at NJ PAC, and the name of the conference that we're going to be doing is Let's Talk Health and Wellness. That too is open to the public, and we hope that you join us. Again, I can't thank you enough for recognizing us. Dorothy Reed, our president, she works very hard. It's unfortunate she was unable to be here this evening, but she's asked me to do so, and I hope I've done the organization well. Thank you.
I would just like to thank Sister to Sister for what they do. Once upon a time, my wife had just a little ditzel on her mammogram, and, you know, I'm a professional physician, and I was just, my mind went blank. It all turned out well, but Diane Dudis, who many of you know, worked with me, and she just took over and got things going, and it's just difference, and get the ball moving and get things happening, and it can save lives. So I thank Sister to Sister for what they do. Do you have a motion to open public session?
I'm moved.
Second.
And second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Public session is open, five minutes. You can speak once, no yielding of time. Please state your name and address when wishing to speak.
Michael Hampton, 319 Schilling Drive. A few councils sessions ago, Town Manager Warren Locker had mentioned issues about parking, street parking, and it affecting folks' driveways. I was just wondering if there's been any progress made on that, just because with my experience driving around town, especially with the side streets that are parallel to Hamilton, it's outrageous. It's to the point where people are parking a foot away from the curb, and it's risking getting sideswiped just trying to see if you can go straight through a stop sign. And like, you come to a complete stop, and you still can't fully see left or right. My other question is, what is the town planning to do also in that area around Lewis Street about the homes that operate full-on flea markets during the weekends? And worried about pedestrians, the parking over there gets outrageous, and I just don't want to hit someone's kid because people are operating full-blown businesses. I mean, we have people operating auto shops damn near in the middle of the street over there. So I'm curious if we can maybe look into that and see what's going on. Also, I want to know if there's something the town can do from an ordinance perspective on forcing commercial properties and commercial tenants of the town to upkeep and maintain the status quo of the town. The property values in Franklin over the last several years have risen, but we have certain strip malls that very much look like they were built in the 1980s, and I feel like that's a part of the reason why we have trouble attracting businesses to come into town in areas like Kmart. A lot of that Easton Avenue strip malls across the street are terrible. They look awful. So is there something we can do from a perspective of at least making the buildings be powerwashed? If there's potholes in the parking lots, who do we talk to to get those filled? Because again, you know, I was at the meeting last night, and there was a lot of talks about property values, and I agree. I think that that's an important thing the town should look into, but not just in areas across from 55-plus developments, but the entire town. One of the other things, and this is my last point, I would like to see most of the town meetings start off with, I know we do the prayer and the pledge, but right after that, an acknowledgement of civil discourse. Some of you weren't in attendance last night at that planning board meeting, but the fact that we had a planning board member have to address an audience of 200 people that a woman, or not a woman, but that a person accosted one of the attorneys representing the warehouse in a bathroom, can't happen. I was called a douchebag. I was told my parents should be embarrassed to have had me as a child. Now, these people are 86, 75 years old, 34 years old, and it's like, again, things could go very differently in the wrong circumstances. I consider myself a nice person. We're all going to disagree on things. That's the beauty of America. But, you know, there was some folks in here last night that came and spoke to me after I said what I had to say last night at that meeting, and we do disagree, but it was, you know, great to see someone of your generation coming out and at least being passionate about something. And I think that folks just need to be reminded, because for instance, I know we have a debate coming up that's going to be in Canal Walk, and after the way that those folks acted last night, if I was a member of the, I wouldn't want to go over there. I mean, it was outrageous. I was accosted by the town planner for the second time. Many of you received emails a few years ago when me and him had an issue here in this building. I was having a conversation last night with Secretary Christine Woodbury that she waved me over to have during a break. He decides to come over, yell at me, tell me to go sit down, shushes me away. I'm confused by something, because I thought these were public meetings, and I thought we were all adults. And I thought adults can have conversations, and sometimes those conversations can get passionate, but if an adult doesn't want to have a conversation, that adult can end that conversation. Our deputy mayor found himself interjecting and doing the same exact thing, but a little bit worse when I was having a conversation with Dr. Orsini, that he started with me. And it was very calm and collected, and we had another conversation in the parking lot afterwards. And I have a lot of respect for him, but as I told the deputy mayor last night, I'm a grown man, and no one's going to shush me away or any other member of the town. So I think something needs to be said about civil discourse, whether you're members of the council, members of a planning board, or members of the community, because no one should be disrespected for having an opinion, whether or not that opinion aligns with your personal opinion, your political opinion, your professional opinion. It's just an opinion. It's okay for us to not be on the same side of things. That's all I have to say.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Seeing no one come forward, may your motion close the public portion meeting.
Second.
Move then second and all in favor of closing public portions, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion is carried, public portion is closed. I have no answers for the public session. The manager isn't here right now. We're going to move on to council comments. Mr. Petasnik.
I have no comment.
Purit.
Just want to acknowledge the great work of Sister to Sister, especially in my mother's passing. They planted a tree in her honor, which I'm overdue to visit, so I need to get over that appreciation for all the work that has in the community. That's all.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a, time is up. Time is up. These aren't detailed answers, but just give a little feedback to the speaker I'd asked. Basically, if I understood right, there was concerns about line of sight when you come up to the end of, depending on the roadway, it's either 25 feet or 50 feet, could be longer if there's fire hydrants and things like that. The manager forgot to explain, but you have to park or can't park within 25 or 50 feet depending on the type of intersection. Call the police non-emergency line, and we can't tell you exactly what they do, but I would believe they'd go out and do, in their best judgment, whatever they needed to, to enforce that law. So it happens. Unfortunately, sometimes it happens in the same spots often until perhaps a complaint is made, but I trust the police director has our officers out there monitoring for what she believes they should be monitoring for, and I will bring it up at the next public safety meeting, which I'm a member of, because I've noticed an increase in that too. Might just be, I don't know, summer's over, more people are moving to Franklin, whatever, variety of reasons, sometimes several apartments clustered, there's not enough street parking, but unfortunately, they'd have to find something, someplace to put the car, driveway, or legal spot in the street. But please, call the non-emergency line of the police department, or obviously if you see an officer or somebody in the area. As far as things like potholes in strip malls and whatnot, again, I don't see a lot, but I do see them, and it bothers me. My understanding is it's a zoning violation, property maintenance that falls under the zoning department. I would call, give as much detail, actually, you can go online, I believe, through a portal. It may just be for public roads and public property, but either way, you can definitely call into the zoning department. They would go out, give them either a verbal warning or a notice of violation, and within a certain amount of time, they'd have to fix that, like if you have peeling paint. As far as general facades, understandably, we don't have rules that make you keep up with a certain style or trend, or we can't dictate what is pretty or looks attractive, but peeling paint, rusted metal, things like that, especially potholes or garbage containers that are improper. You know, we have a lot of businesses, a lot of restaurants, you're bound to have some that for whatever reason fall to some slight disrepair, but they would fall under zoning. Sometimes health, if it has to do with like garbage or whatnot, but most, I think, things you're asking about is zoning. So, and if you need any more clarity, Mr. Warren Locker would, I'm sure, be able to give you, but my understanding, dealing with these issues for a long time, is that's who you would contact. As far as the civil discourse, I always tell people, often even when I know they have a different opinion in mind, to come and make your voice heard, make your opinion known, I tell people, I'm not telling you what to say, but I just ask that you be polite and professional, because we want to have a dialogue, and the more people communicate the way I think you were suggesting, the better. But again, I don't think it's something we can really dictate. Some of us mention it in our comments or in our invocations or otherwise, and I know the mayors often with volatile issues in the last couple of years have commented about how it works so much better, and we appreciate people being polite and professional. I don't know if that helps. Thank you. Otherwise, again, I know it's been said a few times, I know many people have gone through breast cancer, other cancers, so thank you for the work you're doing, and keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Udine.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just a few updates. I think you hit on the potholes. I received several messages on pothole opening on DeMott Lane towards Easton Ave, and I think it's already been taken care of because I passed it this morning, and so I felt. So it's really simple. You go online, it's a form, you just fill up, take a picture, put it in, and it goes straight to DPW, I believe, and Mr. Warren Locker can confirm that. So if you see anything, feel free to let them know. There was a soft opening that a couple of us went to for a business in Franklin, Vital Care of Princeton, their specialty infusion shop, and it was really nice to be among other residents, medical field doctors and pharmaceutical staff, and just wish them good luck on their opening. I attended the concert, the Gazebos, so the Gazebos has turned out to be this beautiful place now. We see so much events in the summer, there's weddings that Deputy Mayor and Mayor handles, and I think, you know, overall feedback, I was walking around and I was asking our residents what they feel about the Gazebos, and it's just, oh my God, just so much positive feedback, and I think it's a place now that everyone sees as a fun, engaging, interactive place, which is what we wanted it to be. And I know we are still in discussion of making it even, always enhancing it with more lights and landscape and all that, it's underway, but it's definitely a place where people feel at peace, at least that's the message I got from folks, they're just engaging and entertaining and just happy. I could not attend the Leaf House grand opening, but I think few of you guys went to the council piers, but I've met with the owners earlier today, and once again, congratulations to them on their opening. I think one of the things that I'm seeing is that, you know, we at Franklin Township have a lot of businesses blooming, and we always say, you know, shop local, support local, let's, you know, keep our businesses running. So that's all I have this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Embarrasson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congrats to Councilwoman Crystal Purit. She has been named 40 under 40 in New Jersey.
Somerset.
Oh, I said county. By BIA, so it's an organization that I'm very familiar with, so one of the largest, I guess, in this, membership organization in the country, actually, of all the businesses, and the county, and the county. So, congratulations to Crystal. I read that, and I had a note. I guess the biggest vote I made yesterday at the planning board in my four-year career, so some of you may have seen it, attended it, the group that frequented our council meetings for many months is not here today for a reason, because their, I guess prayers were answered, the board, the planning board unanimously denied the B9 warehouse application, and it's probably the most consequential vote I made in my four-year career as elected official. So, but I'm glad, I think we are at least in the first group we have denied it at the planning board level. I think they have options, and they would pursue them, I understand. Anyway, other than that, we were part of the same ribbon cutting, the mayor was there as well for the vital care. Last but not least, the HRC meeting today got canceled because we moved our meeting today, and they had to cancel. So they're going to meet, they're going to meet next month, October. That's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you. For my comments, I too was at the planning board meeting last night, and it was really very, very interesting. Few lessons to learn there. First of all, one of the council, one of the board members who is probably most scrutinized by the members of Canal Walk, because he was hard on not only the presenters, experts, but also on the projectors, experts, talking of Mr. Thomas, turned out to be the hero of the night. He is a by-the-book, emerging planning board member. He and, and I would say, Mr. Chase, Dr. Chase, and the chairman, Mr. Orsini, you're the only one that's not a doctor, Mr. Thomas, are just by the book, they've been doing it for years, they know the book very well, and they follow the law. And Mr. Thomas was brilliant last night. He pointed out a major flaw, and he made the motion to deny, and I think it's a very defendable motion, and I think we're going to win that lawsuit. And I turned out to be a hero by just following the rules, which he knows very well. So I congratulate the board, I congratulate the deputy mayor for his work on that. I think we're in a very good place, but it reminds me of, the next point I want to make, we got in a bad spot. We had an ordinance made 25 years ago that was, that set Canal Walk and an industrial park on a collision course, and over the years, they grew towards each other, finally collided. What I think, what I'm suggesting that the council does is request that the planning board do an examination of the B1 zone, BI zone, and put an emphasis on properties that border residential units, and come up with a suggestion about how we may make a zoning change so that this doesn't happen again. Right now, it could, you know, we've outlawed warehouses. What's the next big thing? What's the next thing that's going to come along that we can't anticipate that's going to cause a similar problem? So I think we have a very, very capable planning board, and I would like to ask councils to join me in directing the manager to ask, go through all the steps of having the planning board examine this.
Mr. Mayor, can I just interject here? That is what we're doing. We awarded a contract for a master plan reexamination of the BI zone, along with a traffic study. Those are two separate things that you did already.
Right, I understand that, but what I want is an emphasis on the...
Well, that's, we haven't started the master plan reexamination yet. You certainly, we can certainly steer the plan, the planner that was awarded the contract for that purpose. We don't need to do something more, we've already got the wheels in motion for that to be done. So that, that's, that's part of that process is to determine where we need to make corrections that weren't corrected in the past.
Okay, great. Another note, the library board is going to have a grand opening tomorrow for the library, the new Southern Library Branch next to the Franklin Park School. It's at 5 o'clock tomorrow, 28th. This library is bigger and better than the extension that we had before, and it's going to save $90,000 a year, because it's not going to pay rent, and it's not going to pay taxes, including taxes it paid to itself. So this is something I started working on the, my first day as mayor, because the mayor picks the board, there's a lot I had to do to get things done, and I want to also thank the president of the board, because he was like a dog that, with a bone, pursued it and pursued it and pursued it and made it happen. So please join us 12 to 3, I'm sorry, at 5 o'clock, and there'll be light refreshments there. Finally, what is from 12 to 3 is this Saturday, there's going to be an art show right here in the lobby of the township, municipal building, and the way this came about is I was going door to door, and when you do that, occasionally you get to, you get invited into people's homes, and when you do, sometimes you see this incredible art, and sometimes that incredible art is by the person you're talking to. I think there's a lot of talent in Franklin, and I thought that we would share it, and we're going to have an art show here in the municipal building, free to the public, light refreshments served, from 12 to 3 this Saturday. I'm looking forward to it, because I've seen some fantastic art, and I think I'll see more on Saturday. All I have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick announcements of some upcoming events. The police department is working in cooperation with the New Jersey
The police department is working in cooperation with the New Jersey Motor Vehicle Commission for an opportunity for people to conduct transactions with the Motor Vehicle Commission here in our municipal parking lot on October 3, 2023. Motor Vehicle Commission has what amounts to a large motorhome that, kind of an office on wheels. If you're interested in conducting a Motor Vehicle Commission transaction here on October 3 from 10 to 2, you should go to the township website. And there is a link to fill out an application for registration. It's limited to 40 customers a day with 10 standby positions due to just the amount of time taken for transactions. And there's also a limit of 12 real ID appointments. And they're beginning at 10:00 AM as well. If you're just looking to surrender license plates from previously registered vehicles, you can do that as a walk-up without an appointment. October 4, Wednesday, is National Coffee with a Cop Day. There are three locations and times where you can meet with some of your local police officers, ask some questions, discuss some issues that they are. On Wednesday, October 4, from 7:30 to 9:30 in the morning at the Dunkin' Donuts in Village Plaza, 1067 East and Avenue, from 2 to 4 PM at Panera Bread, 441 Elizabeth Avenue. And then from 4 to 6 PM at Nopal Taqueria at 456 Elizabeth Avenue. And at that time, Nopal Taqueria is also offering a 10% discount on any dining meals over $15. So you cannot have coffee with a cop, you can have tacos with a cop. And the last is that our Public Works Department has started the annual hydrant flushing throughout the township's water utility system. And hydrants are being flushed between the hours of 7:00 AM and 3:30 PM and also between 7:00 PM and midnight, as it will happen between September 25th, so it started a couple of days ago, and continue through November 3. If the water utility is out and flushes the hydrant in your neighborhood and you notice some discoloration in your water, that's, that's normal and it will settle after a couple of hours, and it does not affect the potability of your water while there's that little bit of disturbance in, in the water causing some discoloration. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no council discussion items tonight. Approval of the minutes. I present the Township Council Work Session Regular Minutes and Executive Session Minutes to the Township Council for their approval. I'm sorry, what are the dates? Number 12, 2023. Do we have a motion on the minutes?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion, anyone like to change an item, collect, direct a comma? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Amberson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois. Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oney Jaka. Councilmember Potasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Puitt.
Abstained.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilwoman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wright.
Warrants in the amount of $5,901,349.39 up to 27, 2023. I presented the Township Council payment. Do we have a motion on the warrants?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Time to pay the bills. Any discussion? Pull an item. That's an item. Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Amberson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois. Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Oney Jaka. Councilmember Potasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Puitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilwoman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wright.
Good. And pay our bills. Public hearing and adoption on a second reading. So we have first readings and second readings. First reason, readings are to announce to the world that we're going to consider a ordinance. And the second reading is when we consider that ordinance preceded by the public having an opportunity to speak to us about that. So the second readings, ordinance number 4420-23. An ordinance amending the municipal code of the Township of Franklin County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, more particularly Chapter 5, Administration of Government, Section 5-4, Meetings of the Township Council, Subsection B, Agenda, add agenda item, address public comments and questions to the agenda, is presented to town, presented for public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required. Do we have a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of opening to the public, say aye.
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 All say nay. Motion is carried, we are open to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this item only, same rules, five minutes, et cetera.
Mayor, see no one coming forward, a motion to close the public portion of hearing on the ordinance.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor of closing public portion, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Carried. I apologize for finding contracts while I'm running the meeting, but the clerk handed me 7,000 contracts. Want to go to bed sometime tonight. Do we have a motion on the item?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the item? This simply adding the, the item on the agenda will address the public's questions. Okay, no comment. Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Amberson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois. Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Oney Jaka. Councilmember Potasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Puitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilwoman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wright.
Good. Now the thing we've been doing for two months is leave
Mr. Mayor, just to go on the record, Ann Marie wouldn't have done that to you. Ann Marie would not have done that to you.
She'd have wanted somebody to give it to her.
Oh, yes, she would. Item B, ordinance 4421-23, an ordinance authorizing the lease of certain premises owned by the Township of Franklin to the County of Somerset and State of New Jersey to the Franklin Township Baseball League for utilization as baseball league complex is presented public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required. Do we have a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of opening to the public, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. We're open to the public on this item only, same rules.
Mayor, see no one coming forward. Motion to close the public portion of hearing on the ordinance.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor of closing to the public, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion is carried. Do we have a motion on the item?
So moved.
Buddy?
Seconded.
Here we go. Moved and seconded. Any discussion, maybe Mr. Vasanella would like to weigh in?
No, I wished him another 10 years. I can't believe it's been 10 years, I believe, since the last contract, and we're celebrating their 60th anniversary. And now another decade's gone by, so I wished him well. And I know they appreciate council's support of helping keep, I mean, keep transforming that complex, quite frankly, into a really, a really good place that will serve at least the next generation with the improvements we've done there recently, in the last few years. And they look forward to our continued support. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Amberson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois. Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oney Jaka. Councilmember Potasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Puitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilwoman Vasanella. Councilwoman Wright.
It passes. We have no ordinances on first reading. And then we'll have no ordinances on second reading next time. Consent agenda, items A through J is listed on the consent agenda. Portions of this meeting are presented to the Township Council for adoption. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved. Seconded.
Been seconded. Any discussion, anyone like to pull an item? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Amberson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois. Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oney Jaka. Councilmember Potasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Puitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilwoman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wright.
It passes. Any old business, boards, committees, commissions, et cetera. So I have a nomination for a regular member to the unexpired three-year term ending December 31st to the Open Space Committee, Ms. Vanessa Jones. Chuck Martin has moved out of town. He's lost to the Open Space Committee. Very nice man, very smart man, and very energetic man, who was a great addition to the Open Space Committee. He was the person who was on the Trails Committee, which is actually a subcommittee of the Open Space Committee. He was representative. Vanessa Jones is also on the Trails Committee. And I've worked with her for a dozen years. She is also very smart, very energetic, cares a lot about the open space and the trails. So I think she's perfect for filling in for Mr. Martin. Any other nominations for this position? Do it by acclamation, all in favor of Vanessa Jones being on Open Space, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Congratulations, Ms. Jones. I look forward to seeing you now twice a month. Any other nominations? The next item is Executive Session. I present the following resolutions, Township Council for their approval, Resolution 2383, I'm sorry, 23, 383, authorize executive session potential lineup and acquisition on Elm Street, with all these millstone. Have a motion to go into executive session.
Yes, I so moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor of going into executive session? Aye?
Aye.
All say nay. Motion is carried. We're going into executive session. After executive session, there will be no more business to be done except to, except to close the meeting. So the tape will end here. Out of executive session and just close the So, meeting is essentially adjourned. Be well, Franklin.